Okay, that brings us to item C, the consent agenda. Any comments, questions, or what are the wishes?
Move to approve.
The motion is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to verify that these certified shelter care agreement has that been reviewed by? Thank you, thank you.
And just so everybody knows, if anybody's listening, that was Commissioner Wallstead looking to Karen and Karen nodded her head in affirmative. Any other, okay, thank you.
Yes, I've reviewed it.
Thank you, I just thought we should have that on there, just to make sure we knew why he stopped. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried, and by the way, that was my old basketball announcing days. They let me do that. Public comment, item D. Spot on the agenda, if anybody has any thing they want to address the board with, now is the time. Please introduce yourself. Go.
Hi, my name is Kristy Spurling, I live right at Fairgrounds. I see that you guys are planning to obtain the fairgrounds, right? Okay, so. My family has lived there since eighty-eight, my dad's worked there since, gosh, in the seventies when it was a dirt road, dead end. And there was no road at the bottom. We're interested in wondering what your guys' plans are for the fairgrounds. Are you planning to do something like Wofford City? That's kind of what we're wondering. If so, I would highly suggest that you don't do that where the original fairgrounds is. It's outdated, it's inaccessible, it's, if you want to be like Wofford City, we suggest try to find something out in the bypass. We are, we have lived across from the racetrack, I've lived there for thirty-four years. We cannot stand the noise, the fireworks, and the possibility of being, you know, burned out of our own home. We've come to find out that people who have done fireworks there didn't have pyrotechnic licenses since two thousand and one and never had insurance. So if our place went up, we're kind of screwed. Yeah, and if you guys are planning to obtain Mr. Wilder's Field, I would highly suggest not to. In the form that when you start digging, you will disrupt pretty much springs. There are three major springs on the south end of Fifty-third Street. And even the owners have told us, they couldn't even put apartment buildings on there because of how unstable the ground is. The road heaves all the time, the road looks like shit right now, pardon my language. But, yeah. Pretty much, we've been dealing with, well, this summer has been interesting for the fact that we, the racetrack keeps their lights on. We've had it this month, at least a solid two weeks of lights on until midnight to one in the morning with them grading randomly, or they'll be out partying. So I plan on wondering what you guys are doing that with that, once you obtain it. Yeah, no, that's kind of my concerns of what's going on with the fairgrounds, and you guys plan on getting it. We always thought that the county owned it. A lot of people that we know, we thought the county owned it, and come to find out, I guess, not. Yeah.
Thank you for coming and bringing these concerns to us. At this time, all we've done is sign an intent to purchase, so we have no plans any further than that right now, so.
Okay.
As we would say, stay tuned. We'll see where we're at, and there'll be opportunities to be involved down the road.
Okay, yeah, because, yeah, it's just, we've had so many, I couldn't even tell you how many deaths from side-by-sides and motorcycle accidents have happened over there. The roads are too narrow, if you want to expect to like have big rigs for the races, it's, it's a horrible spot. I hate to say it, but try to do something like Wofford City, put it out in the bypass if you plan on building more. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, any other public comment? Seeing none, we will move on, all right. Do I need to wait till eight fifteen on this public hearing, Karen? Should I skip it and then come back? Or is that a hard and fast timer, not? Thanks, Karen.
I would say it is, I mean, you know, you're putting out in the public, they're gonna start at eight fifteen.
That's fine.
In case they want to listen in or something, so.
Okay, we'll wait, we'll skip it. Cal, you got nine minutes, can you make that happen? Sounds good, come on up.
Cal Colen, Executive Director of Theodore Roosevelt Crossway USA-D five, I just want to stop in and say thank you for your membership and your longtime commitment to the project. I know that I did send some attachments up to you regarding our future of where we're going to be going. As you're probably aware, we had a very good session in North Dakota with funding for the nineteen and a half miles to go from the south end of the Longex Bridge up to Highway two hundred, that project will be bid this fall. And probably one of the more challenging things along the entire corridor from Texas all the way up to North Dakota, it's gonna be very expensive, but we did get that funding. We got a fifty-five million dollar grant from the federal, and then we got the matching dollars from the state, plus another hundred million to do those six and a half miles, it's very challenging through those badlands. So that's gonna be bid this fall, and it's gonna be under construction for two years. So that's, that was a tricky little deal. The next phase from Highway two hundred to I ninety-four, I believe that you got a handout or an attachment that was sent to you regarding the different phases of how that's gonna work. And that should be starting into construction in twenty-seven to twenty-nine, breaking out. And the construction is gonna be starting kind of a different deal from two hundred, it'll start going south for so many miles. Then from I ninety-four coming north, and there's a section in the center that'll be the last piece, and I still was unclear how that was gonna be done, but right now, they're doing the planning and the environmental, or not the environmental, the planning and the utilities and that type of thing for that phase. So when you're looking down the road at twenty-thirty, it looks like we're gonna get to ninety-four. Then after that, under this legislation that was done this year, there was a requirement to the DOT to do the environmental from ninety-four to the South Dakota border. So that's, that's another phase. And I do know, I talked to Helen and Lindsay, we had sent out some resolutions to be passed for the entire corridor for the surface transportation bill on the federal level, because that's coming up next year. And it's gonna provide funding for different planning, benefit cost analysis, environmental for that corridor. We are gonna push for that very diligently to try to get some funding on that. And so we are working on getting those resolutions signed, but I understand you folks would rather, at some point, maybe do a letter of support for the project versus resolutions, and that's fine. But that's kind of where it's at, it's, you know, this is a long road, and it has, it takes a lot of time. But North Dakota has really stepped up to the plate and shown our neighboring states, I have to leave here and go to Belfus, you know how close that is. And so we're, we're meeting with congressional delegation down there with Thune's office, Rounds and Johnson's tomorrow with what's going on down there, because they they're not, they did grab it, and they kind of dropped it from, you know, South Dakota's kind of like North Dakota, we, you know, more the eastern part of the state watching that, and we have to make attention out here. And with that being said, and I'll wrap up with this, I think we really got some strength of connecting, and you saw that document of connecting Mount Rushmore to Theodore Roosevelt National Park and the library, and the travel between that on Highway eighty-five, that's where it's gonna happen, they're not gonna be flying into Midora. So it's, that connectivity is gonna be probably pretty good, because I do some work in Midora on volunteer level, my wife and I in the summer times. And the number of people we have met that have flown into Rapid City, rented a car, toured the Black Hills, came to Midora, and the Presidential Library, or the, I mean, it's gonna be the Presidential Library, but then going over to Yellowstone. Those three, that triangle there has a connection to Theodore Roosevelt, and I think there's a lot of interest in that. So that's kind of a sales pitch of surface transportation and the safety of it. If you have any questions, I'll take them, and I do, again, I want to thank you for your longtime support.
Anybody have any questions for Cal?
Cal, what's the relationship between I twenty-seven and the future I twenty-seven and eighty-five, is it the same road, is it, how's that layout?
I'm glad you asked that, because you probably saw if you did get those resolutions, if you read through them a little bit, and that's where I'm going to Belfus tomorrow, the gentleman coming from Texas is coming up to try to clear this up, but long-term, when we look at the funding, we're gonna ask for funding for the interstate designation or planning for an interstate, just the funding. And they've got a designation down there from Texas up into the New Mexico of I twenty-seven, that's designated. So in long-term, if it were to be, and these chips fall in place, part of this will be funded for an I, for an interstate, the study of it. So if we were looking out, if you remember when Eisenhower built the interstates in fifty, they had to have, there's not been any interstates built since that designation, when they started that process. Now, we're looking at new interstates, north and south, that's where, and that's where this hard for me to, not to explain it, but it's basically getting a designation for, planning for future interstates. And if there's gonna be one going through here, built on that level, it would be I twenty-seven. Right now, we're still looking for a four-lane divided, not the accesses and exits and that type of thing. Yeah, this, I went through this about a year ago, and boy, it took thirty days to put that kind of that fire out, because somebody just reported it kind of differently, and it should, should have not went out that far. But it is gonna be something that in the near future, and that's what this planning is for the surface transportation, is to look at that funding for this benefit cost analysis, to show that it does have potential to have future improvements for a four-lane. That's as good as I can get.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the question, because I was wondering the same thing.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's, if it were to be, as simple as I can get, in the future, the planning would be, and it would be designated I twenty-seven. Because we know that north-south are odd numbers, and there's not really been a lot of north-south, we're a long ways from I twenty-five and a long ways from I twenty-nine, so this one kind of hits it in the guts.
Perfect, any other questions? Thank you, appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna wait another twenty-five seconds, and then we'll open the public hearing. If anybody wants to do the countdown, you're more than welcome to. Okay, we're gonna open the public hearing for the Upper Missouri District Health Unit Budget Hearing, a budget hearing. Hearing's now open, are there any comments from the public? Second time, are there any comments from the public on the Upper Missouri District Health Unit, Kristy, I was trying to think of the acronym, but I can't remember what it was. UMDU, there we go, the UMDU Hearing. Third and final time, boy, was that anticlimactic waiting that long. Public hearing is now closed. All right, we are going to have, Helen, you want to come down and give us a little bit of intro to the Basin Electric Power Cooperative?
Yeah, just a quick briefing, you, sometime in the early spring, I was contacted by Matt Kohling from Basin Electric Power Cooperative, and they were inquiring about our willingness to consider issuing what I would call conduit bonding, or I think Matt has a couple of slides, he knows more about it maybe than I do at this moment. And I brought that to the commission, talked generally about the program, which is a program in which a government agency helps to, this isn't the right word, but I would say sponsor some bonding, which allows for lower interest for the party that actually gets the money from the bonds, and this is a federally both, both federal and county, and century code regulated process. There's all sorts of protections in place to make sure that we don't become responsible for any of the funding that's distributed, but it does provide them a way to get the dollars at a lower cost. It's typically used for things related to a community benefit of some sort, so it, hospitals, nursing homes, sometimes some certain kinds of housing, and then, of course, utilities. I think Matt will cover that in a, in a project like this, not everything that they construct would be covered, and so I think he'll talk a little about that, too. I peeked at his slides, but we didn't really talk about it. So as we spoke about recently, I, I am working on a, on program and policy documents that would help us in the future to, let's call it, manage a program like this. So typically, there would be some kind of a pre-project meeting with staff, an application, a review process, and then it would come to the board with a recommendation. I think we'll probably use the finance committee for that going forward, but I'm still working through that process. But because they have been waiting for months, we decided that they could come forward, sort of concurrently to what I'm doing. There's also typically some fees involved, there will be expenses for attorneys and similar to support our portion of this, and the, the person who's receiving, or the organization that's receiving the funding covers those costs, so no cost to us, but typically, there's a fee that is remitted to us, because there is some administrative effort that goes into this. These, these bonds do appear on our financials, it's mostly in the finance department where the work happens. And so that is one of the things that I have not gotten my final recommendation put together, but along the way, that will come to you all, this policy and program document. And then the, the fee schedule is yet to be determined, and of course, that all comes to you for approval. So I'll let the guys from Basin talk.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Matthew Kohling, I'm with Basin Electric, with me is Ryan Norrell, our Vice President of Government Relations, and Matt Simon, our Senior Financial Analyst. Appreciate you guys taking the time to hear from Basin Electric, it's a pleasure to be in front of you. I want to talk to you today about our planned Bison Generation Station and request for conduit financing. What we'll ultimately be requesting from you is a declaration of official intent on our project and the program. Do have a couple of slides, and I'll have them click through to the next slide. I just want to note the location of our station is around Epping. We drove by the site yesterday, they just started turning dirt on the site yesterday. So it'll be a fairly large project, I've got some couple of renderings on the next couple of slides, if they can click through. This is what the project will ultimately look like, it is a natural gas-fired electric generating facility, and is going to be a fairly large project out by Epping. I think the next slide shows the substation that'll be located there as well, should be just south of Highway two out by Epping. On the next slide, I've got a few details on the project itself, as I said, it's a natural gas-fired combined cycle electric generation facility. It'll be right around fourteen hundred megawatts of power. To give you some context on that, some of you may be familiar with the Antelope Valley Station that Basin has down by Beulah, that is a nine hundred megawatt generating facility, so this will be about one and a half times the size of that facility. We are targeting commercial operation in twenty thirty, it is scheduled at this point, budgeted to be a three-point-nine billion dollar project, so a major capital investment for Basin Electric. This is gonna be a facility that is dedicated to our natural load growth or legacy load, it is not a data center facility or any sort of crypto mining facility. This is natural load growth and electric grid stability. This is intended, the size of the facility, this is gonna be the future of power supply for us in Northwest North Dakota for the next thirty or forty years. Meeting the, the growth that you've had in Williams County and that we've seen all over the Bakken region. We are actively going through our permitting process at this point, on the next slide, I've got a few slides on our permitting aspects. We did receive approval from the North Dakota Public Service Commission just earlier, the seventh would be last week. They gave us site approval for the facility, so that was one of the major permitting hurdles that we had to go through. Majority of our road easements and transmission line easements are now in place, we're still working on a few of those, but those are going fairly well, as we're working with landowners. Site grading and all the road work should begin shortly, now that we have the PSC approval. And all of our major equipment contracts are now in place as well, our general manager, Todd Brickhouse, is actually down in Georgia with Mitsubishi Power today, signing the contracts for our generating turbines. On the next slide, just some other permitting statuses or permitting approvals that we have, we did have a rezoning of the land through Williams County. Site grading plan is approved, our stormwater permit has been approved through the state of North Dakota, and the stormwater management plan has conditional approval through Williams County. On the next slide, the air permit application is one of those that we are still working through with the Department of Environmental Quality. That permit application has been submitted, we expect to receive that in the next couple of months. Once we have that, then we can actually begin the physical construction, and as they say, go vertical or start the shadows on the ground, where we can put the buildings up. The impoundment permit has to do with the reclamation of the facility, as I say, this facility has a thirty or forty-year life. We are obligated, after the conclusion of the facility's life, to turn that back to greenfield, so the impoundment permit allows us to do that, has the regulations and stipulations for Basin to return that back to greenfield, that's the end of its life. And we'll have additional permitting that is going on through the course of construction, we have an occupancy permit that we will need, but that's one of those things, you can't have an occupancy permit until you build the building, and then you do whatever it takes to be able to occupy it. On the next slide. I wanted to just cover the sound impact study, we have done a sound impact study, just to make sure that we're not going to negatively impact any of our neighbors up there. The nearest residences will be about a mile away from the actual power block, and the estimates on the sound levels should be equivalent to a regular farm field at that distance. Light breeze, bird calls, so it's not a loud facility, and it shouldn't negatively impact any of the neighbors up there. On the next slide, I wanted to cover the workforce impacts, we anticipate when the facility is operational, we'll have about forty to fifty full-time employees that are stationed at the facility for operations and maintenance. During construction, it'll be about a thousand workforce positions, and we are actively working now with local communities to figure out a workforce plan, to make sure we have adequate facilities and housing for temporary workers that'll be here through construction. What we really are approaching you though for is the financing for the facility, as I said, it's about a four billion dollar project, so we have a major capital need. Have them click to the next slide. And what we are using or thinking about this is as a, all of the above financing strategy. We do have public bonds that we will going out to market, we have private placement financing, other term loans through the Bank of North Dakota and other banks, our members will contribute some of the capital for the plan. But we will also ask you for tax-exempt conduit financing. The next slide. Tax-exempt conduit bonds are something that has been around for decades now, for a generation or more, we haven't used them very much. When you look at sort of the history of this, we haven't built a whole lot of things in the United States over the last few decades, so this, this program has not been used as much as it could be. And as we are building out the Bakken and building out our generation facilities, this is an avenue that provides us with some flexibility and some lowered interest costs in order to get big facilities built. Conduit bonds are a bond that is issued by a government agency, and it's available for specific sorts of expenses that have some sort of government nexus. So stormwater facilities, solid waste facilities, things like that, that are typically thought of as government sort of functions. But when we have a facility like this, that'll have some of those government nexus facilities, conduit bonds are one of the financing options that is available. We are right now working with an engineering firm and an investment bank to detail the exact expenses that will be qualified for tax-exempt conduit financing bonds, usually that's about ten percent of the cost of the facility, so we're looking here for about four hundred million dollars that may be available through conduit financing from Williams County. Basically, it just helps us reduce the interest expense on the project. When you're paying interest on four billion dollars, that's a very big number, and anytime you can reduce that amount, even by a little bit, it makes the project more affordable for us and for our members and the ultimate, and consumers here. On the next slide. Tax-exempt conduit financing, it is authorized under North Dakota Century Code, Section forty fifty-seven, also Section one forty-two of the Internal Revenue Code. You, as the county, would be the issuer of the bonds, and then you would loan those, the proceeds of those bonds to Basin Electric in order to reimburse costs that we incur for the construction of the facility. Basin Electric would be the obligor on the bonds, we would be the only party that is responsible for repayment of those bonds, so even if at some point in the future Basin Electric would default on repayment of those bonds, there's no recourse against the county or against any other government agency for repayment on those bonds, Basin Electric would be responsible for those. As Helen said, we also bear the cost of issuance on those bonds, so fees, your costs, your attorney's fees, we anticipate you would engage bond counsel in order to go through this program, and Basin Electric would be responsible for those issuance costs that the county would incur as well. On the next slide. What we are looking for, for you, is a declaration of official intent, where you, as a county, would declare your intent to use the proceeds of a future bond issuance to reimburse Basin Electric for expenditures that we would incur on the project. Basically, the declaration just establishes compliance with the IRS regulations on this, and it starts the clock for the sorts of expenses that we can get reimbursement for. Any expenses that we incur before you issue the declaration of official intent are not eligible, so we do have some of those expenses that we've gone through at this point, and those will just not qualify for reimbursement here. Anything after you issue a declaration of official intent, as long as it qualifies under the regulations, would be subject and qualify for reimbursement for us. Wanted to clarify as well that your declaration does not bind Williams County to issue the bonds. We would work with you and with your counsel to craft the necessary agreements, there would be a loan agreement, bond proceeds agreements, some other things that the lawyers will work out, but if at some point you decide that this isn't something you want to pursue, and we can't come to an agreement on, on bond issuance terms, the declaration does not bind you in any way, you can decide at some later date that we just can't strike a deal, and there's no, nothing that's gonna nothing that's going to going to bind the county on that. We would still proceed with the project. We're committed to this as part of our long-term financing and our long-term development as an organization. It would just happen to increase our our interest cost on the project if we're not able to do this. So with that, I think the next slide just has the official declaration of intent that we were looking for from Williams County. I think you probably have that in your packets, and I'd be happy to have me or any of my colleagues here answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks. Anybody got any questions?
Just a couple.
I expected it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the real impacts, and you may not have this answer, but I would, I'm curious to know your approximate gas utilization per day, and I'm guessing in the millions of cubic feet per day.
I do not have that answer, and I'll look at my colleagues.
I I I kind of figured this was the wrong crowd for for that kind of answer, but needless to say, it'll be significant at one point, four gigawatts, and and I was doing a little digging with AI, and AI estimated at about two hundred and forty million cubic feet per day of of gas consumption, and and that's a critical component for continuing to produce oil because we have a a gas problem. As our our wells age, they they produce more and more gas, and so adding value to that natural gas here by converting it from a molecule into an electron is is tremendously valuable. And and as I understand it, you don't just build a power station anywhere, you build a power station where the power is being consumed. And and this is, again, nothing to do with data centers, nothing to do with with crypto facilities. This is all about projected load growth and producing the power where it's consumed. It's the most efficient way to do this, and and it's my understanding that you also haven't built a a large facility like this in decades. Is that correct?
Well, a facility like this, we have not in decades. We do have Pioneer Generation Station, which is a little bit different, but but that in this same area is going up now, is in operation now. But a facility of this size, it's been quite some time since we have done that.
Good. So it's just general comments, but those that's critical for us to be able to continue to produce oil in this area without constraining oil production by being able to consume that gas here and not only consume it, but add value to that natural gas. And that's a that's a great thing. It's much better than flaring it out in the field. That's a tremendous waste of a valuable resource, and so I I I'm personally really appreciative that that you chose to build it in Williams County and and glad to have that that power production being done north of the river. It's very expensive to cross the river, as I understand as well.
Yeah, and in talking with some of our our engineers and planners, there are really two things that you you want to do when you're siting a facility, if you can get it close to where the power is being consumed and close to where the fuel is available. And here in in Williams County, we've got both. You've got a big power draw with all the development and the the natural gas is available. We're working through natural gas contracts to to secure that for the next thirty years of of the facility's operation, and we're excited about the the potential.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Any any other questions? No? I guess I I only have one general comment, and and I guess what draws me is probably not as much as molecules, is the simple fact that at and at the end of the day, if we don't do this, you just have to pass that on to the end user. So I mean, that that's what drew me to it, was say, well, we can help the people in Williams County by doing this project, so. If there are any other questions, is anybody interested in making a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make motion to approve the declaration of official intent of Williams County Commission.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? Discussion? Hearing none. Beth, roll call, please.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Well, I very much appreciate your time. We look forward to a very long and fruitful relationship with the county.
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. Okay, we're going to go to department heads, and it looks like we only have one on today. Cameron, Development Services.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. As you're aware, this is my month to give an office update for Development Services. Our office is a little unique as we present to the board every month on planning items, but I'll give a brief update on some of the numbers in large projects, including what's going on in our Building Division as well. And I apologize, I'm going to read a little bit from a paper because I'm not good at memorizing numbers. For the Planning Division, I'll start with that. In two thousand twenty-four, we had seventy-six projects. This would include subdivisions, zone changes, conditional use permits, et cetera. So far to date, in two thousand five, we're at sixty-five projects. We have seen an increase in activity in two thousand twenty-five and will shortly surpass our twenty twenty-four numbers. Depending on staff workload, we anticipate bringing zoning ordinance amendments to the boards prior to the end of the year, and that really is anticipated on or dependent on on the workload and staffing. Some of the amendments that we're looking at would include battery energy storage systems as we've had some requests for those in the past, solar farms. We've had a couple of developers kind of throw that idea around, and other counties within the state are also working on ordinances for those. And various minor corrections to the zoning ordinance, kind of naturally, as we go through the ordinance, we'll see whether it's misspellings or some things that contradict, and so we'll work on cleaning that up. And again, the goal is hopefully by the end of the year to bring something forward to both boards to to seek approval. We did see an initial uptick in pre-application meetings and interest for data centers. However, those have slowed down a little bit here recently due to potential applicants not being able to provide power purchase agreements. Power purchase agreements are a requirement of the data center ordinance, and some of the applicants have told us that right now electrical companies are not committing at this time, and so we we have seen a slowdown with that, but I don't know if that's going to stay the way it is or it it's going to pick up here in the future. For the Building Division, in two thousand twenty-four, we issued one hundred and thirty-three building permits with a total project valuation of just over thirty-eight million dollars. This includes one hundred and five residential permits, twenty-two commercial permits, and six demolition permits. So far to date, in two thousand twenty-five, we're at ninety-two building permits with a total project valuation of nearly forty-two million dollars. This includes seventy-three residential permits, eighteen commercial permits and permits, and one demolition permits. Some of the large projects to note, in March of this year, Basin Electric finalized and was issued their certificate of occupancy for the Pioneer Generation Station addition. And in July, Basin Electric was also issued a site grading permit, as the gentleman had spoke about earlier, to begin work on the Bison Generation Station in Willlock Township. Some other ones to note, Williams County Parks was issued a permit for their work at Blacktail. GoGo Tech is a small data cryptocurrency mining facility. They were issued their permit, and they also have received TCO for a few of their containing or containers. Two-story addition for the Trenton Volunteer Fire Department and Met Towers for Apex Energy, who would still have to come to this board for full approval, but are looking to possibly have another wind farm in the county. So two thousand twenty-five, it's been a busy year for our department, and we anticipate continued demand for new projects, building permits, and zoning requests. We do look forward to working with the public through the building and zoning process, and we appreciate the support that we receive from other county departments as well as this county commission. And that's about all I have, but I'm open for any questions if you have any.
Anybody got any questions for Cameron? No, no questions? I guess I just want to say thanks for the the work that you and your department do. Keep it keep it up. We appreciate it, and we appreciate it being able to, at least I do, call pretty much any time when I get confused and you help me out.
Well, I appreciate it, and I couldn't do it without my staff. I've got a great team that really knows what they're doing, and it makes it extremely helpful for me as a department head. So thank you.
Nice. Thanks, Cameron.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have any other department heads that need to speak, do we? Okay, just checking. Helen, looks like it's you.
Good morning. Just for the record, Karen and I did work with Matt on that declaration that that Bo's motion authorizes the chairman to sign, and so that'll get done today. And then, as I say, I'll continue to work on our program side of things and continue to bring that to the board as it comes together. So we have the staffing report. You see that there are two positions we're requesting approval to fill, a maintenance technician in the Facilities Department and a patrol deputy in the sheriff's office, but I'd like to add one. Coincidentally, not on purpose, it's a property technician in the Development Services Department. It's not a property technician, it's a planning technician. Yeah, sorry. So if you see on the in the third column over, we have a position in the Development Services Department listed there. It's not approved to be filled right now, but it's one that we carry on the budget, and we're going to repurpose that position to be one that would fill some of the needs that we've identified in the Planning and Zoning Department. As you hear, they have they have gotten busier, and there tends to be a little more intensive work that goes along with these big projects that we see coming right now, but but we don't see a slowdown, at least in the near term. And so we're going to reallocate that position that you see listed to be a different title, a different function within the department. So I'm looking for your permission to advertise and fill a planning technician position, and then you'll see that there'll be one less carried on the far right side.
Okay, what are the wishes?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
All second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Right on the backside of the report, we have three board positions to appoint. The City of Epping, Epping Planning and Zoning Department or Planning and Zoning Board, and remember, the Century Code says, based on population, if a city has an ETJ, then there is required representation from within that ETJ. It's appointed by the county commission. And so in this case, the City of Epping has an ETJ, Planning and Zoning. Dennis Johnsard was serving on this board, and as his term ended, we realized that he also no longer lived in the ETJ. And so it has gone before the City of Epping Planning and Zoning Board that Keisha Reddick applied, and they were, they they sent me note that they were, they thought she did qualify, verify, I think Karen verifies her residency, so we're we're good to go. I'll just go through all three of these, maybe. School District Annexations Dissolutions and Reorganization Board is a board that we are required to have five members on. Tom Wheeler has been serving on that board for a long time, but Joshua Smith is the person to replace him in that seat. And then the Weed Board, we we have a vacancy there right now, and Mark Schmidt has applied, and again, that name was vetted through the Weed Board. And so I would love for a motion that appointed each of those people to the boards, and although we have it in writing, I think we like to note their term for the record.
Which is, what are the wishes?
Move to approve those appointments.
Second. Do we, and did you want them to?
If Beth is okay just taking them off of the piece of paper, I'm good with that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? Roll call, please.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes, motion carried.
All right, we continue on with our new process to bring agreements and contracts more formally to the board, having the chairman continuing to sign those in lieu of department heads. So today, we have the Forvis Mazers contract, which relates to a software package that the Finance Department uses. So of course, as I bring these, that means I'm doing it on behalf of the department heads, and we've had Karen do her work on them.
Would make a motion to approve and authorize the chairman to sign.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
That's all I have, unless you have anything for me.
Perfect. Thank you, Helen. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
And seeing no further business, adjourned.